It's still working. You have to sign it?
It was.
All right, we're gonna call the order. The meeting, Parsonsville Planning Board. For October 16th. Our first order of business is to review some correspondence. It's old correspondence from what I can tell. It's the floodplain ordinances, so we've already reviewed that. The letter we sent to Mr. Paulette regarding his incomplete application. And that is it. Which would move us on to our review of minutes, so in order to do that, we need to have someone make a motion to move Harvey up for the vote, so we'll have a quorum.
I make a motion to move Harvey, make a quorum up to, uh, so we'd have a quorum to vote on all the, uh, course, the minutes of the meetings.
We have a second?
I'll second.
On favor? All right, Harvey, now you can vote.
Oh, no.
So our first meeting-
I just felt good, the base of my hand.
Is June 19th.
Yep. First one.
Which are not available.
Yeah, that's not available.
And the next set of meetings, which I'll be abstaining from voting on, because I wasn't at that meeting.
So you can abstain, but we still-
We can review them.
We can still review, we can make it, it'd be two or one.
Yep.
So the majority of the board will still vote for.
Anyone see anything lacking in that one page? It's pretty straightforward.
Mm-hmm. I don't see nothing.
One other thing to read through. Do we have a, oh, we can't vote on these.
Okay.
Because the file I'm standing from the vote and Jim wasn't here then.
Right.
So these minutes are enough to be tabled.
I think you still have the majority, right?
We still have a majority, because what we have, we have three here, if you abstain, we still have majority voting, it could be two or one.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept, uh, the Wednesday, July 17th, uh, planning board meetings, minutes.
And do we have a second?
Second.
And all in favor? So three with one abstaining, so this motion passes. Our next set of meetings is August 21st, which still aren't available, so we'll move to September 18th.
You were here, this, like, but you've made it.
I made it, this was the one, one meeting. Does anyone have a motion to approve the 9-18-24 meetings?
I'll make a motion to approve the-
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Which carries the votes. October 2nd meetings are in October 2nd meeting notes.
Well, this is short. All right, I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, October 2nd minutes.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, clears us of that one. Our next article of business is the site plan review from New England Karting Challenge, which we understand he is not able to be present tonight, so we're gonna have to table this matter. But as well as tabling that, his conditional approval expires today. So does anyone want to make a motion to grant him 30 extra days?
I'll make a motion that we grant him 30 extra days of temporary approval until the next planning board meeting, which is maybe more than 30 days.
Kevin, I, I just want to mention that he did mention that he closes at the end of October.
But we still got to eventually make approval for him to do everything he wants to do.
Construction.
Yeah, that's what this is all about.
Our next meeting will be... One second.
Takes 16, 14 days, 15 days left in this month.
Our next meeting will be on the 20th.
That's 15 and 20, it's 35, so we gotta have a 35-day approval.
So does anyone want to make the motion to give him a 35-day extension?
Somebody, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to extend.
Or amend, I've already made the motion.
Do you want to amend it to a 35-day?
I'll amend it to 35.
And do we have a second on the amended motion?
Second.
And all in favor?
Wait, yep.
Okay.
We have to go back to the original and prove it too. You proved the amendment, now you gotta prove-
Do we have, can we have a vote on our original, um, do I have a second on our original?
Did we have a second on the original 30 days?
Yes. Yes, and can we, yep, and then just to close the loop, all in favor of the first 30 days that was then amended?
It's been amended and approved too.
New business, so we had discussed possibly changing our meeting day to Mondays, which there wasn't an issue with the selectmen, I believe, I thought that was a preference of their part. Aaron?
We have our meetings on Mondays.
Okay.
You can certainly meet at the same time, the problem would be extreme from the same-
We were told that you guys preferred Wednesdays, but you couldn't have Wednesdays because we were meeting, so that if we moved to Mondays, you could have your Wednesdays.
I guess it's up to you, what's your preference?
So that's, if you guys are fine with your day, we're staying where we are.
The only, we can, we can talk about it on, in our meeting on Monday, because the only issue with that, I think there was an issue with payroll, because you have to have payroll in that day.
Okay.
So I think there was a concern about Wednesday, but we could talk about-
So why don't we table this for the next meeting?
Yes.
Sure.
Based on that discussion for the-
We'll have to make a motion to table it or not.
Yes, let's have a motion, let's just keep it all in the up and up.
I'll make a motion that we table the possible meeting day change until our next meeting, November the 25th.
Correct, may I have a second?
I'll second.
And it's November 20th.
I'm November 20th.
And all in favor? Okay.
Harvey, you're not, oh, do nothing. Oh, that's right, you ain't, I'm sorry, you're right, my mistake.
Um, floodplain ordinance is our next. What's that?
What do you have today this week?
Floodplain ordinance.
Well, we had our workshop on it.
Yes.
There's been no changes made that I see.
Yeah, I don't see any changes in it either.
I have the, just the announcement and the, and this, yep, and the original changes. There was only, if I recall, two items that you guys were concerned about at the, at the workshop, which we couldn't have done anything at the workshop to change them anyway.
Right, we could not, do nothing at the workshop. No motions can be made to vote it up. Forgot what they were.
Weren't we looking for definitions to be added?
Yeah.
To the zones, to get our maps. And we were hoping for a link, a correct link to the current maps.
Right.
Which, no, we don't have at this point. Are we on a time deadline with approval of this ordinance? Does anybody?
It's, it's already been approved. These were minutes changed, they weren't, they recommended to be, like-
Right.
We already have the new ordinance.
But are we on a time deadline for amending them?
I don't know, I don't see that, are we?
There was nothing I could find anywhere.
Yeah, see, I could find either.
And even, I think that with this announcement, it just looks like pretty-
Our changes are more clarifull than definition of any issues that may arise.
We have to go back to the order selectmen.
Yep.
You have to have, have to go back to the town meeting.
So if someone has to make a recommendation-
We have to make a recommendation.
We can make that recommendation based on those two additional changes. Anyone would like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion, but I don't remember what to tell you, because I could have a word that's been changed.
I can tell you.
Have you got it there somewhere?
Yep. Uh, we'd like to add the definition of the five zones, the ordinance, and a correct link to the FEMA maps onto the town website. Also, as well as the selectmen, we should send a copy of our recommendations to the Saco River Corridor Commission.
Okay, I'll make that motion as read.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? So this will go back to the selectmen, when Desiree comes back, we'll have her-
Yeah, she'll-
Send a letter and-
Yep.
To both the selectmen and the Saco River Corridor Commission.
Makes sense.
Not just protect everyone in their floodplain shirts. Scheduling a workshop for Wednesday, November 2nd, uh, November 6th. Which I would recommend.
Yes, I would.
I think we have a lot of stuff coming our way between-
We do.
Reviewing the comprehensive plan, as well as some of our recent ordinance changes, so-
Right.
Without a set agenda, I still recommend a workshop if I could have some motion.
I'll make a motion that we do have a workshop, Wednesday, November the 6th, to discuss topics of concern.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Scheduled, and I'll send Desiree an email, that I even wish to listen to the recording. Now, public questions or concerns or statements. Gentlemen? If there are things that we can discuss at this point. JP, just for formality, for you.
Sure, my name is Justin Espinoza, I live at 335 Mudge Road, I can stand if you'd like. I appreciate being recognized, Mr. Honorable Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, and other planning board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I did want to give you guys a heads up that I have been asked for my expertise being a former chair of the planning board with this new ordinance that has come forth to assist with two planning board applications that will be coming before you. One being 24 Federal Street and the other one being directly across from the bowling alley, I can't, I forget the address, but it'll be Trevor Sanborn's. Both are related to the new cannabis ordinance that just passed. And both applications will be a change of use from whatever building, change of use it is, to cannabis facilities. And I understand that there is gonna be a third, if not more, application submitted to the town, and I know that three will make it on the agenda for, for next month, for you guys to review. I was, I was involved with the select board over the past year and a half in the, first in the initial citizen's petition that was denied by the select board, and they took it upon themselves to work with the town lawyer and, and unfortunately not include the planning board, which I think that they should have, in constructing the ordinance. And then through the passage of the ordinance, and now with these guys getting their, their change of use packets passed. So one of the, um, the applications just got submitted tonight, you guys will see it come through on November, and then Trevor's will be submitted next week as well. One, yeah, I, I know that this is new for, for, for all of us, and I, at least in my experience, I, I'm, I'm looking at it just like I, I look at everything else. It's, it's aligned with, with a yes or, or a no, just on, on a table, and as long as everything meets the standards set forth in, in the ordinance, and everything is there in these packets, and all the, the requirements are met, it's, it's a business in my eyes. And so you guys know just a little bit about me and my background in this. I do not have a cannabis business, I'm not involved in cannabis, that business. My interest in this is I have a small business and I believe supporting other small business owners, and that's why I'm helping in these applications, and that's where my expertise is lending a hand in supporting small businesses. The workshop that you guys will be having, I, I hope that you get a chance to review the applications, because I know that some of the the ways that, that some of these applications kind of might butt up against each other is gonna cause some complications down the road. So, yeah, I don't, I know that you guys can't decide on, on anything during workshops, but you might get a chance to, to review them and, and review the process of what, what it's gonna look like during, during the meetings, so, yeah, it'll be, it'll be interesting, to say the least.
Yep, I do agree that that needs to be part of our topic of our workshop, just to review the ordinances so we can make accurate.
Right.
Can I ask a question?
We're gonna need to copy.
Please.
Um, JP, um, you mentioned there was two or three other applications, two more.
So I, I know of, of three, so there, there's one for the Chinese restaurant. Because Tom is, is no longer a business there. Somebody's gonna be leasing that out. Trevor from the Walker Building, he wants to, you know, he's got the medical row in there. He wants to take a small portion of that and make that into a retail space across the bowling alley. And then there is the gentleman who is considering taking part of the Stanley Building and, and making that into a retail space, so that is-
The application did not make the, it did not make the agenda.
No.
The deadline.
Yeah, it didn't make the deadline.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, all, all three of those have not made the deadline for the October, for, for this meeting here, they'll, they'll make it for the November agenda.
Have they considered the close proximity of each one of them?
Well, that's gonna be the, the conundrum.
That would be the responsibility of the board, I believe.
For us to decide that.
The, the, the way that the ordinance is written is there's a 750 feet setback between, um, between facilities, right? So you can't have a facility within 750 feet of each other. Now, that's not, that's not gonna be for, for you guys to decide who gets like first, first dibs on that. It's, it's going to be like up to the, the, the select board to review, like who, who, who's there when, when they're there. It, it's really gonna, gonna boil down to like who has, who has the most viable application, and who has the most viable business, and who has the most viable location as they do. I, I have some concerns. I, yeah, personally, I, I've got some concerns about one of the applications, because I don't know how, how feasible it is. I, I don't. And I'm, I'm sure you share those.
Some of this would depend on if these applications are complete-
Right.
Than the ordinance. So that may, that may nullify the concerns, you know, right there.
But do, do we have a final copy of the cannabis ordinance yet? I don't, haven't seen a copy of it.
I'm sure we do for the workshop, it went online.
I want a rip, hard copy, paper copy.
I don't mean to interrupt, I, I know what's posted online says draft, but I think that technically that's final because it got voted in, you know? But they should update that to say final, because it was voted yes, in my eyes.
Is it still draft, I thought?
Why, on, on the website itself, it says draft cannabis ordinance, but I think they just need to change that nomenclature to say final, because it was voted as yes.
Okay, I'll check this evening, and I'll email Danielle if it's still as draft.
Because I thought I heard her say she was gonna take that.
I remember her saying she has, I don't know if she just got overlooked, I haven't looked at it.
Sure.
It's still set draft.
Yeah, I, well, I, I haven't looked at it in two or three days, so it might have been updated in the last couple of days. Yeah, and, and I, I know that-
Have copies of that in the office?
Me, I know I can't print that, whatever, I'm locked up.
And, and I know, working in, in any sort, or any level of government, from town to federal, we all know that the, the wheel moves slow, and these updates take time, but I think that, you know, there wasn't a lot of pre-planning, I don't think any, anybody, I don't know that they really expected this to pass. So the, the application for, for this wasn't done until after it passed, and then I think that they kind of figured out the process of it going through the planning board and making it back to them, was kind of decided after the ordinance had passed, so I, I know that this is going to be the first iteration of that, and maybe over time that this will be streamlined in, in a different way, but it's, it's how we have it now. I honestly, I, I think that this is the, I think that this is the way it should be done. I think a building should be change of use first, you know, to make sure that it's the right building, and it meets the, the use, and you know, you've got the things like a septic system, you've got fire suppression, you've got ingress, egress, like the building can support a business in there, you got parking spaces, and you've got like, yep, you've got like driveways, like, like you do for all businesses.
It's the criteria of all of our applications.
And, and then you go to licensing, and, and you go next door, you don't fill out a license application first, like, but, you know, so it's, yeah, it's a process, and I, I think that, you know, we're, we're all, we're all working through it. It's my, my personal, not, not so-
Same thing we go through to get our liquor licenses.
Exactly.
It's the same process we would go through to get our liquor licenses.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, well, we're all, wow, so-
There's no setback on the liquor licenses, sir?
Uh, there are some setbacks, I think schooling, um, schools, it's mostly schools, you know?
Yeah, mostly.
So, we don't have, like, we, I mean, we'd be subject to Saco River Corridor. If I wanted to open a restaurant in the Stanley Building, I think I would be subject to the Saco River Corridor Commission's approval as well.
Yeah.
Or any of those.
This is a competition setback, that's, that's the difference.
Correct, yeah.
So that's the thing about who comes on first, and how do you evaluate these first?
And, and, and I, I do get the setback from businesses to businesses on, on some level, because, you know, you don't want to be the type of town where you go in, and there's like weed store after weed store after weed store after weed store, I, I get that integrity portion, you know, like, but at the same time, you also have to, to write something in the ordinance of determining preference, and if there is competition, like a structure of how that will be dealt, and, and we didn't do, do that, so now we have to kind of determine how that plays out, and it will play out.
Yeah, I know, I think it's an interesting dilemma.
Yeah, so, you know-
There are towns and cities that limit the number of liquor licenses that are available to people.
Yeah.
And the number of, that you can have in certain locations, so I think that was just a step we missed.
Is that up to the selectmen to-
Generally.
How many can be in the town, that was one of my-
It's not written in the-
I had all along.
I'm unaware of, it's not listed in the ordinance, so-
And, and sometimes do lotteries and, and other things, that they chose not to, to put it in there. That's, that's why, um, I, I just, yeah, so I, I did want to introduce myself, I did want to let you guys know, I am working on two of the applications, and I, I hope that with my experience as a prior planning board member, they're easy to read applications for, for you guys, and if I am missing something, please know that I will get it to you guys as soon as possible, but I damn sure, my intention is to make sure that everything is up there.
After being called out by JP in the past, I think that they'll probably be pretty accurate. Um, thank you for at least giving us the heads up.
Sure, absolutely.
It gives us time to discuss a whole new field for us.
Yeah, we just gotta make sure we got a hard copy of that ordinance at our workshop meeting.
I will come over tomorrow and get copies, or I can, if they don't say draft, I'll print them.
I'll be here tomorrow.
Okay, I'll stop over tomorrow and grab some.
Yeah, because we-
And then I'm, then everybody's gotta make the meeting. And I'll make sure you get one.
Yeah.
And I'll send Desiree out an email about tonight, even though she'll look at the minutes and ask her to make sure she reminds everyone that this is a topic that's gonna be coming up very quickly.
Article four in the ordinance document is conditional use process.
Okay.
All these are, all these are gonna be conditional use applications. So that's gonna be the, it's, I think, one or two pages, but it kind of goes over all the areas. It's a little bit different than a site plan, but it kind of goes over everything.
Similar, but a little different, yeah.
Like the question with the Chinese place. There is an apartment next to it, I mean, right in the same building. Can you actually have an apartment along with a cannabis?
I don't know if that was specified that you could not, I mean, you could have an apartment in the same building as a restaurant.
Oh, that's, I'm just-
Or another type of business, so, yeah. I, again, as was pointed out, I think if there was more involvement of all the boards, we might have covered some ground that we're gonna run rough over. And then there's always the, I, I believe they will still have the same option of going for a variance or a board of appeals approval if, for some reason we, I mean, we're basically only approving if it's, if it's within the ordinance, like anything else, we're required to approve it. But then it goes to the selectmen for them to decide on the final.
We're just looking at the facility itself and all the-
Correct.
Containment goes along with it, it's all we're looking at. Because as far as the actual approval of that functionality-
Yeah.
That's not us.
It's just us trying to help the local business people follow that process.
Yeah.
It's just a new form of business that we've dealt with, and we haven't dealt with before.
Yeah, to your point, I think there would be security for an apartment would be an issue.
Yeah.
I would say that's part of all of this.
Think if they keep their snacks loyal, nobody will- I don't want to make light of the situation, it's people's livelihood, however, I do think that some very important facts like that were overlooked that are just gonna make it more difficult.
Our two those applications are almost like next door to each other.
That's what JP was indicating that there's a possibility.
18 is the Stanley Building, and then the Chinese building is-
12.
12.
They're almost-
24, sorry. They're only like, they're only like 50 feet apart.
When you read through the ordinance, you'll see there where the issue comes up.
Yeah.
But it's not an issue for us to deal with.
No, it's not.
We only have to deal with the approval of the application, that's an issue with the selectmen.
Meet all the criteria.
If the application's met the criteria, met, meet.
That's not our problem, the other part.
And you guys can pre-review the app, I'm sure Desiree will get these applications right out to us, you can review them and make questions ahead of time, because I'm sure we'll have a lot of them. And we can discuss them at the workshop, we just can't vote on them.
Right, we can discuss anything of that topic, anything, we just can't vote or make any recommendations or anything.
And I don't want to speak ahead, I've read through, I don't know if you read through the initial one, I've read through that. I haven't seen the other two, obviously.
118, 118, or Stanley.
Yeah, I'll read part of that, yeah.
So I would encourage everybody to read through them as soon as we get them, and I'll make sure we all get copies of the ordinances, and the workshop is open to the public.
Oh, um, and there might be scheduling conflict for the 6th, I might not be present, and I might be attending a wedding for the person who's gonna be renting out the building on the Chinese restaurant, but his legal representative will be here.
Is that the person that we should be mad at for not booking a wedding up for anywhere we know?
Right.
I don't, I'm not in the wedding business or anything.
Yes, feel free to talk about the application.
And I think if you have something specific, JP, that you think you've forgotten? And I think if you have something specific, JP, that you think you've forgotten, as the person that's helping them prepare that application, just forward it to Desiree so she can disseminate it. That way it's under the Freedom of Information Act.
Yeah.
Any other questions for JP, guys? Aaron, do you have anything? You don't even, no copies of the ordinances for us?
I don't know. I'll be here all day.
Mr. Gudomski, welcome back. Do you have anything for us?
Yeah, very much so. Looking forward to you guys taking a look at my application.
Okay, hold on one second, just because I made JP do it for the sake of it. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Looking forward to you guys taking a look at my application. I think you'll be very impressed. I think the building at 24 Federal is perfect for our use, so I think you...
I think he's the one getting married.
Probably is.
I actually will not be here on the 6th. I am sorry about that. However, either my lawyer or someone will be here.
Again, it's just a workshop.
Is he, are you the one that has the big, oh, the big building down there across from the bowling alley?
No.
Oh, no.
Not I.
That's Trevor.
That's the guy I want to talk to.
Okay.
I can make that happen for you.
No, it's, it's kind of personal.
I can still make that happen for you.
I know where he is. I can always go down there and see him. Because I just only live like around the corner from him.
So now we know it is you that's doing the building, the business, looking for the Chinese restaurant.
24 Federal, I think it's very well suited for the use and I think it will be a quick transition for us. So we're just working through the process and happy to oblige any questions or if someone is here, it will mostly be to make sure that all questions can be answered on our behalf. I wish that I could be here to discuss it, but I'm not going to be.
It's a workshop. You'll have your opportunity at the next meeting. Because you'll be on the agenda for the next meeting. And is there an apartment in that building, Chris?
There is. There is a studio apartment in the front. If you look at the front, there's two openings and the left is the studio apartment, a long time tenant, has been in it for five or 10 years, I guess. And then the right-hand side is where it's taken. And, yeah, I think all information will be in the application. It's very complete and very concise, so.
And clarification, you're no longer associated with the Stanley Building?
No longer. We were unable to come to terms on business matters.
Yep, that's, I just wanted to clarify because where we have applications on both. Clear up those questions. I was trying to think of anything we could ask you while you were here.
Name is Bill 118.
I knew you were going to ask that. That's why I asked.
That's what I was thinking of.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Was it? Anyone else? It was probably a promised a short meeting, so I'd like to, anyone else? A motion to adjourn?
I'd like a motion to adjourn at 6:35.
Can I have a second? All in favor? So passed, adjourned.
Adjourned. Press stop twice. Jesse, before you leave, can I see you?